Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Holyoke School Committee. It is November 12th, and the meeting called the meeting to order at 6:00 P. M. Roll call, please, Ms. Feliciano.
Yes.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Present.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance, the flag, United States of America, and true republic, where riches stand, one nation, under God, indivisible.
So I'm just gonna do some household stuff here real quick. So on March 29th, 2023, Governor Healy signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March 31st, 2025. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location, and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meeting. The act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March 31st, 2023 to March 31st, 2025. Pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 20, I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel. Ms. Feliciano, is there any public comment? Okay, we're gonna, anybody in the audience that wants the public comment, signed up? Please come to the microphone. Make sure that you sign up, and, oh, there's the microphone. And state your name, address, and is it an item on the agenda?
My name is Richard Peck. I'm from West Springfield, Mass. I don't believe the item is on the agenda for this meeting. There is something pertaining to it that I believe is, or a subcommittee meeting on Wednesday, but I just wanted to comment generally on the issue.
So, one of our rules, and again, I can, somebody wants to set a motion, you know, what motion you would have to do. So, the school committee rules is that it must be part of the agenda. I did just see your email right now. My apologies, I wanted to get back to you. The policy subcommittee is meeting, and that will be on the agenda, and that's where you could speak up on it. Now, if somebody wants to suspend the rules.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
So I have a motion by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Isasa. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. You may speak.
Well, as I said, my name is Richard Peck. I'm from West Springfield. I'm actually, I would like to urge the committee to consider naming the new Holyoke Middle School after William R. Peck, as it's been known for some decades now. William R. Peck was actually my great uncle. He was my grandfather's younger brother. He was a towering figure in the development of the Holyoke Public Schools. He was superintendent for some 43 years here. He was a progress, he was a leader, very progressive for his day. He was Holyoke born and bred. He was like many Holyoke students. He had the first in his family to attend college. And though from a modest background, his intelligence was obvious, so obvious that he was, though young, the city put him in charge of its public school system while he was only in his twenties. Something that would be very, very rare today. I just also would say that the story of his life would make a great example for the young people of Holyoke to emulate and to follow. We would love to have graduates of Holyoke's public schools go to, be the first people in their families to go to college, go to college, accomplish something, and come back to Holyoke and serve the community for their careers. Something we'd love to see replicated. And that's an example that we would love to be able to hold up to students from all backgrounds in Holyoke as something that they should emulate and follow. I just wanted to say, to let the committee know that. I don't want to take up any more of your time. I know that's an issue that's being discussed in the city of Holyoke right now, and I just wanted to, I guess, put in my two cents worth. I don't live in, I realize that I don't live in the city of Holyoke. My grandfather left Holyoke about 100 years ago and moved to West Springfield, but Holyoke's still very dear to us, and we love to see good things happen in Holyoke. So thank you very much for listening to me, and I wish you all the best going forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And that if you choose not to name the building after him, please commemorate his legacy in some way, because I already emphasized, it's a wonderful example for students coming up through the Holyoke Public Schools to follow.
Why, thank you so much for coming this evening and speaking to us. As all of you know, we can't talk on the subject, but it will be heard at the policy subcommittee, and it's going to be the, what if the city council doesn't approve, correct, the naming of the middle school? But again, you can be there as well, and there's still a process. So thank you for coming.
And thank you for allowing me to speak.
Have a good evening. Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, I'm gonna go ahead and move to communication reports. And I see here I got Samantha Rodriguez.
Hi. Okay, starting off, we have our Holyoke Theater Company is kicking off their performance of Miss Nelson is Missing on Wednesday. It'll go through Wednesday through Friday at 6:30 P. M. and Saturday at 1:00 P. M. Dental admission is $10, and I recommend that you go see it, because I have friends who were in the play, and as far as I've seen, they did a very, very good job. I'm seeing them on Wednesday opening night, so I'm very excited to see them. College visits are coming to a close in the next few weeks. Our last few visits are on the 25th and 26th with celebrations for MCAC, Massachusetts College Accepted Celebration. On the 26th, we will also have the Credit for Life for Juniors and our reverse job saddle for ninth and 10th graders. If you don't remember, I was a part of it the last few years, and I plan to be a part of it again this year. And then, for school-wide, we had our Spirit Week on October 28th and November 1st. This was like one of the most noticeable weeks that we've had people participate in the school. Monday was pink, we're pink for breast cancer awareness day. Tuesday was pajama day. Wednesday was orange to prevent bullying. And on that Wednesday during reach block, we had a school-wide walk, including kids from just about every class coming to join the walk, and we ended on the third floor with thinking of ideas on how to prevent bullying. That was very fun. Thursday, we had Halloween Costume Day. I went to Scream from Ghostface. I went to Ghostface from Scream. And then Friday was Flannel Day. We, our next Spirit Week will be, not next week, but the following week, and it'll stretch throughout that full weekend, Monday, Tuesday, before Thanksgiving break, as well as our pep rally that'll be on Tuesday. And then, one more reminder that the student summit will be on 12/5. Student facilitators have been engaged in training for the last two weeks and have one more session before the summit. They are focusing on belonging and the categories of questions are grading and assessment, navigating high schools and support and engagement in the classroom. There will be a survey that'll go out again for this Wednesday, tomorrow, and that will happen during reach block.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for Ms. Rodriguez? Nope. Thank you so much. I do have someone.
No, I just said thank you.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Okay, Ms. Tensley Williams?
We have a class on how to prevent bullying.
It's not a class, it was more of a discussion during our reach block on how to prevent bullying. No, we came up with, because I don't know if you've seen on Instagram, McKenna definitely posted some pictures when we were up with posters of preventing against bullying, and we thought of definitely speaking out and making friends, not leaving people out, which was a big thing. And then just being nice to people was the biggest thing, so.
Not asked because I was bullied at this point.
Thank you so much again, Samantha. Ms. Rodriguez, sorry. We're getting on a first-name basis. I'm Meldrick, by the way. Moving on to new business, because there's no report from the receiver slash superintendent nor myself. New business, Holyoke Receivership Provisional Exit. Do I have a motion? So I have a motion by Mr. Sheehan.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Wilson, and this is for us to receive and accept the communication from Acting Commissioner Russell Johnson on the provisional decision to receive the Holyoke Public Schools from chronically underperforming designation at the end of the school's year with return to local control on July 1st, 2025. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passes unanimously. Approval of minutes, I, we can either take them as.
Make a motion, take it as a package.
Take as a package, so we have a first by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Sheehan, and it's to take the following minutes, vote to approve the meeting minutes of the 819 School Committee Meeting, 99 School Committee, 923 School Committee, and the 722 Local Control Minutes. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wallahan.
Thank you. Yeah, the minutes from August 19th. Motion on here that said it was unanimous. The establishment of the Accountability Committee, and I voted no on that, since it's unanimous.
Hold on one moment. 819. Okay, so the 819, you're questioning the unanimous. So with that being said, because we'd have to go back to the to the videos. Do we want to reconsider? How we take it? As 819.
I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
Okay, so then.
And then I'd like to make a motion to accept all of the package except for the 819.
Okay, so then we're taking a vote, so I have Ms. Wilson with the new motion that we take it as a package, only 99, 923, and the 722 Local Control. We have a second by Mr. Sheehan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Oh, wait, one moment. Any abstain? You're abstaining from all of the above? So abstain. Two votes. Okay, so it's, Mr. Colomar.
I'm gonna abstain on the September 23rd meeting, because that wasn't present.
We took them as a package, so you're abstaining then completely.
No. Just on, just on the.
The action is, it's either you're, we're voting on all three as a package. I can't say that we're gonna, unless we go individually. So now, I'm gonna ask the committee, are we going to?
Point of order. There's a motion on the floor. You called for the vote. Finish the vote.
So, that's, you want to abstain for the whole package? Yes? No? Okay. So going back, take this vote again, all those in favor.
We have voted.
Then let me count. Four, five, six. So it's seven ayes. Two abstain. Okay, and you've got. You are the abstain, you and Orlando, Mr. Isasa, sorry. Okay, now going back to the 819 School Committee Meeting. Move to table.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? You're abstaining? You're abstaining. So two abstain. And that's Mr. Isasa and Ms. LeBrome Martinez. And it'll be seven ayes. Okay, moving on to the Community Advisory Team. That the school committee votes to receive and approve the proposal from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to facilitate meetings with the Community Advisory Team.
Like to make a motion?
I have a motion by Ms. Wilson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Is there any discussion?
So.
Wilson.
So I think this is enlightening for me to understand the costs. I find it, it's much more expensive than I would have envisioned for this process. I find it to be a very beneficial process, so that's why I would be, but I'll be voting in favor, but it is a costly endeavor for the city.
Any further discussion? So I just want to be transparent. Did you all receive the updated version? The corrected version was sent at 12:02 P. M. It's right there. Did not receive it. Mr. Sheehan?
So the only change, this went through the committee today, and the substantial change that's in the document that you received previously is on page, the highlighted page, where it says, on page here, down at the bottom in orange, the LTA time match. There is money that the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission received. This $2,000 is no money from the city. It's money that they received so they can start the work between now and the contract being executed. So it's no additional cost to the city. It's additional money they have in their grants and planning money that they get that they're putting towards support of this project so they can start it. So that is the major change. The only other change that occurred in our meeting today was that up at the top, it says City of Holyoke, and it's in the City of Holyoke School Committee. That's the agreement. But it's also known that this still has to go to the city solicitor's office. I mean, we can approve this, but there still could be like legal language that the solicitors pull out from that, so. And there were some grammatical changes and such that were made in it. But other than that, unless Feliciano has any notes of any major change, I don't think there was any. Nothing changed the intent.
Nope. It was just the date and written format. Ms. LeBrome Martinez?
Thank you, Feliciano, for the clarification. So just for the people that are watching at home, because a lot of the concern is where money comes from, from the city, a lot of times. You're saying that for some of the work that is gonna be done for this particular process, that this $2,000 is gonna cover some of the costs, that it's not coming from our at all, or is it?
Because because of the lengthy amount of time it can sometimes take to go through the procurement process, and the fact that this work needs to get started right away, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission was able to put additional resources towards it. So we're still gonna use the full 31,525, 125. And so they can start right now. They have money that they're gonna use right now, that 2,000. So that 2,000 is money in their account that will not get billed for, that is gonna cover staff time.
Is there any further discussion? So, Mr. Wallahan.
Thank you. What company did we use when we hired Dr. Ayaz back in the day? Was it this company?
So, no, but this has nothing to do with the search. So this, the charge of this group when dealing with the transition plan, it's two-pronged. It was one, to advise the school committee on what they want to do in terms of a superintendent process. And the second part was advising the school committee on the current receivers evaluation and some of the data collection, or evidence collection that's used for the receivers evaluation. So this report is community, or this work is community engagement sessions to meet that first prong of it, and it's to advise the school committee on the search process. So with that being said, it's one thing that we talked about too, like, the school committee really, not really, cannot make any decisions regarding the search process until we get this report, which is what we agreed to with the state in the transition plan. So then, we'll be able to make those determinations then.
Thank you. So, any further discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes unanimous. Okay, moving on to ongoing business, policy revision, policy DGA authorized signature. This has to do with the reviewing of the warrants. Now, I know here that I put down for the superintendent receiver to adopt said policy. I've been informed that it's been adopted by the receiver, so I am going to withdraw that motion. So that means we have nothing to, well, we do have somebody that wants to discuss something there.
I'll discuss it.
Mr. Wallahan.
Thank you. Yeah, the only question I know we've, the committee has bantered is back and forth for over a year where there is members of the committee, some are not, some are no longer on our full committee. The committee was really unsure of, our main focus was, what does this full board want from us in terms of the signatures? Do they want a majority of the finance committee to sign them? Or would this body be okay with just designated one member of the finance committee to sign the warrants? So I'm kind of throwing it out there to the full body.
Ms. Wilson?
So, the policy was adopted in April 23, April 23rd, 2024. It was the second pass by the school committee as written that any member of the school committee policy, I'm sorry, finance subcommittee could sign the warrant. And in the event that someone was not able to sign, that the chair or the vice chair would be able to sign in the absence. So that was the policy that was approved.
That's good. Thank you.
So now I'm gonna come back and ask, are we going to implement it? That's what it calls for in the capacity building plan.
We've been talking about that, yeah, for, at length, just the protocols in terms of who's gonna sign first. Is it gonna be signed electronically? Is it gonna be signed weekly? So those are, those are the questions that we're bantering back and forth, but it'll be done.
I would just say with order of signing, like, I mean, would, first of all, is any warrant in the city signed electronically? Oh, they are. There's no more written on them?
We have a bunch of warrants that we sign. We still do some paper, but.
That people up electronically, then?
All right, so I'm.
Then when we're not in receivership, it should be superintendent, then school committee signing it. That's the order. So from the lowest common denominator to the highest common denominator.
And we need to clear. I'm gonna need the local control to then clarify with the commissioner, because when I read this, as if to already start the process. So once you've developed, because it clearly says, well, this is the action. Holyoke School Committee revises and begins implementing protocol for reviewing warrants and payroll. You're already implementing the protocol. This was supposed to be done in September 2024, so now we're saying that we still ain't there yet, we're still thinking about how we're doing it? Okay. Receiver ship?
Yeah, the policy is the policy, and that will be implemented. You know, that, you guys all reviewed that for implementation post-receivership. As part of the capacity building plan, what's said in there is a protocol for reviewing warrants. So there's still a discussion during this provisional period about how the school committee is gonna get involved with reviewing warrants. What we in our office have said is that the warrants are available for review on a weekly basis. Anyone from the committee can come and review those warrants at any time, and that has been the case all year. We started that last year. We've made warrants available for review of the school committee. Whether or not that is happening, that is, you know, that, we've made it available for review. And then, post-receivership, this policy has already been reviewed, so that it's ready to go day one.
So going back to what he just said. Just want us to think, to move along, because we have a training, and I don't want to hold up our students that are here. I need everybody to think about, especially the finance subcommittee. When are we going to start implementing the review process because, and develop that protocol? Because the receiver's stating that for over a year, it's been available, but it hasn't. So I need some sort of decision by our next meeting, school committee meeting, because this is just piling up as we don't continue. It keeps adding up. And remember, we're on a provisional exit.
We're meeting on the 20th, so should be. The members kept having questions on this, so.
Okay.
And again, past members that are not on the, on the committee are not here anymore, and they had a question. So they're not, they're not here to respond to your questions. They're just, they're not here.
So now you have the new, you have your new member.
Members, yeah, that's been changing.
Okay. So hopefully, we won't have to change anymore.
I'm the only one on the finance committee from the last two years that's still there. So we've had numerous members come and go. And again, some of them are not on this body anymore, so it's been a, it's been a discussion through various members. So it's not just a will of one, which is me. So again, we're gonna be hopefully putting this to bed without any further questions from the members, which is their right. Everyone has a right to question anything, right? So hopefully, we'll have an answer for the full, the full committee.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wallahan. Mr. Colomar?
The question is, at our meeting before, excuse me, was a signature must be by the members of the finance committee before it goes to the mayor's office. Period. It's gotta be signed, a warrant authorizing the mayor to approve this before anything else can happen. And that's, that's the major decision here. Is, I think we're all in combination that one of the members of the finance committee will come down weekly and sign the warrants. But make sure that the warrants are all signed before they're sent down to the mayor's office. Otherwise, he has a right to reject those if no one's approving them.
Okay. Well, what we're talking about is reviewing them now. That's what's on the capacity building plan that we were supposed to implement that. That's what I was just asking about. Are we going to start that process? Mayor Garcia?
Can we just start, so a member of the finance committee, you have a primary, a second person, and just, maybe you or second person, and just maybe you don't sign it, but just put your initial on it or something, just to get into the practice, into the habit. So we could just start that as soon as, soon as possible by the next warrant.
Well, they're going to be meeting on November 20th to discuss what protocol they're going to be doing, and then they're going to bring it back to the full board because we have to vote on it as a whole. So there's no reviewing yet. They have to come up with that protocol. Okay, I'm going to move on from this subject and do, I will entertain a motion to move out of order and have our students showcase.
Motion to go out of order.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. I, thank you all for waiting. I am so sorry. You guys have been so patient. Thank you for waiting because we do want to hear from you this evening. I want to welcome the Donahue School ABL program.
Hi, I'm Ashante Esther. I am one of the KDA2 ABL teachers here at Donahue. I have one of my coworkers, this is...
Hello, I'm Jonathan Torres. I'm in the ABL program as well. I teach third through fourth grade.
And these are some of our students that came. They've been waiting so patiently. I'm so proud of them. What's your name?
Cyrus.
Nice to see you, Cyrus, and...
My name is Catalina.
Your name is Catalina.
Strong, strong.
So for our showcase, we just wanted to exhibit some of the ELA lesson that we have. We know you guys have something scheduled, so I'll skip actually through my, no, it's okay, because I'm pretty sure they're tired of the school night. So I'll show just some of our routines that we go through for our ELA structure, just to see what goes on in a sub-separate classroom, and I know their parents were excited to see it.
They're going to be presenting as well, the students?
It's a routine they're going to follow along with us.
I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yeah. Can you go to slide four, please? My friends, what lesson?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. My friends, can you go to the next slide? Thank you. Yeah, so you guys can see. Ready, my friends? Let's do some blending. Our word is s-ic. What word?
S-ic.
Nice job, Si-Si. Our next word is s-ack.
S-ack.
What word, Catalina? The-ack.
Uh, dad.
Nice job. That is our word. Can you say m-iss? Miss. Nice job, Si. Catalina, what word?
Miss.
Miss. Nice job. So we're practicing some of our blending in our next slide. My friends, can you say rats?
Rat.
Can you sound rats?
Rat.
R.
R.
Ats. Rats. Nice job, my friends. My friends, can you say sand?
Sand.
Nice job. Can you sound sand?
Sand.
And, sand. Nice job. And these are just some of the routines that we do to help our friends with phonemic awareness, the blending and segmenting to help them increase their fluency for their reading and their writing. As we go further in the presentation, I have my kids go over their sound recognition. We do some reading and our kids are actually doing some of the guided writing. This is to show that our kids are actually able to be very vigorous and handle very structured classrooms, something that is a tier three for the general education. We're using as a tier one for our students, and they're doing very well, and they're showing so much growth. So we just wanted to come in. I know my friends are tired, so thank you for allowing us to come and just show you some routines that we have. My friends, can we say thank you?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I would like it if they're able to come back again and really be able to do a full presentation. I'm sorry for the miscommunication, but I'm happy that they, they were able to be here, and thank you again for being so patient.
My friends, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Welcome.
But hold on, there might be a question. Anybody have a question or a comment? I know Ms. Tensley-Williams always has one.
I do. Because if I could, I would hug every one of you. Thank you so much for coming. We love you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
We'll set up so that you can come back again.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye. Bye. She's like, I did it. I know, I'm so excited.
We are now go, we're now going to go back into our ongoing business and move right into our MASC training, which is the superintendent evaluation process. Glenn, do you want a seat? You could sit over there if you'd want. Samantha, you want to scoot over one with Ms. Wilson so he can use your microphone? Oh, you found the Dunkin' Donuts in there.
The process is flexible enough for the school committee to adapt it to meet your own needs, and I'll explain that as we go along. The evaluation process requires that the district goals be in place so that the superintendent can develop the superintendent's goals, and so that you, the members of the school committee, can then determine which criteria and indicators of success you'd like to use in evaluating So the first thing that the school committee needs to do is to set some ground rules for the process. You evaluate the superintendent each year, but if the superintendent has received a, meets expectations or proficient standard, you can go to a two-year superintendent evaluation. Also, what's very important is what your contract with the superintendent says regarding the evaluation. For example, does, will your contract require that you consult with the superintendent to establish the evaluation process, or that you will meet a mutually agreeable evaluation process? Now, the difference is huge. I will give you an example. In one of our districts, about 15 years ago, they hired a superintendent and realized they'd made a very serious mistake. And before the first year was over, it was clear the superintendent had to go. But the superintendent said, you can't fire me until you've evaluated me, and you're required to have a mutually agreeable evaluation process, and I'm not agreeing to anything that you suggest. So they had to buy this person off and pay three years' worth of salary for one year, which is why we suggest that you consult with the superintendent, respect the wishes of the superintendent to the extent that you can, but if there's disagreement, then the school committee gets to break that tie. Don't look for trouble where no trouble exists, but the lesson of that former district is very instructive, and I, and I don't want to, I don't want to embarrass the people of Amherst by telling you where it was, but it was 15 years ago. So the first thing the school committee needs to do is set the ground rules. And the first of the ground rules would be what your evaluation cycle will be. It's obviously every year, but many of our school committees begin the process with a, with a cycle that starts in July or September, goes through the school year, and ends when the school year ends, which would be June or August, depending upon how you calculate it. There are other districts, mostly towns, who run their evaluation process around when the town meetings take place and when the town elections take place. Then there are those that are usually cities that often use a calendar, of the calendar year, January to December. Whatever it is, you decide what works best for you. That's number one. Number two, you work with the superintendent to establish the district goals and the superintendent's goals. Now, the superintendent, well, let's say you're, I'm going to make this up, but you're, let's say your district goals include closing the achievement gap, improving scores in certain places, making sure that all the principals and administrators are evaluated, mastering your policy and make sure all your policies are adopted. But the, the superintendent, the district goals then follow to the superintendent. And the superintendent will need to have a, an, an education goal, in other words, a district improvement goal, student improvement goal, and personal professional goal. So if your goal is to close the achievement gap, the superintendent's district goal might be to close the achievement gap, and to do it in specific ways. Maybe in certain places, maybe in certain strategies, but, but can work that out. The student achievement goal might apply to individual student cohorts where they might be. For example, our left-handed students will improve by 10%. I use left-handed people because it's the only right-handed person in my household. I'm constantly being told that the minority is bullying the majority, so, but, but no one's offended by you talking about left-handed people, so that, that makes it easy. So let's say you wanted to do a student achievement goal that might be, middle school math scores will improve by a certain figure. High school advanced placement scores will improve by a certain figure. Earlier for the, for the district goal, you might have more advanced placement classes put into place. You might have special goals related to vocational technical education. One of your goals might be to deal with the, well, of course, the enrollment issue is, it's not going to be a problem because you are a vocational technical program that serves Holyoke. I'm assuming most of the students are from Holyoke. So you'd have your, your superintendent's goals, your district goals, and the personal professional practice goals for the superintendent. They can be anything. Some of our superintendents with master's degrees are getting their doctorates as their personal practice goal. Some are learning a second language. Some are just purely personal, professional. I will read all the works of an expert in the field of whatever it might be, personal professional practice. You'll get those goals and you'll, and you'll set them out. Number three, step three after the goals. The school district needs to appoint an aggregator who will be the point person for administering the superintendent evaluation. Someone, for example, will need to get the evaluations that you submit into the central area, review them, and develop a composite evaluation. That's the aggregator. Will take all the comments from all the different score sheets that you'll turn in, and we'll do that. And that can be, that can be anyone. That can be the chair, it can be the vice chair. I've been threatened by several school district board secretaries that if I suggest they should do it, they will come to my house and get me. It's, well, it's a very challenging task, and it's not something, your, your board secretary is, is nonpartisan and doesn't take sides, and if there's a tension in the search process, you may not want to put that person in the difficult position. So it's usually the chair or the vice chair who does that, but it can be anyone. Yes?
So I know pre-receivership, we had, and we have it now, the Leadership Accountability and Measurement Subcommittee.
Okay.
And it was the chair of that, of that subcommittee, and at that time, I remember Ms. Brunel was our aggregator.
The subcommittee can act as the aggregating group if the school committee designates them. So let's say, for example, you do appoint a committee of three to aggregate all the data, and, and that's, now that you've appointed them, you know who they are. Number four, you determine certain special ground rules that you want to set for the evaluation process. Let me tell you what I mean. There are some districts that have said only someone who's been on the school committee for six months can participate in the evaluation process. For example, it might not be fair to somebody who joined the school committee right in, in January as a newly sworn-in member. You've been on the school committee now for 10 minutes, and suddenly you have to evaluate the superintendent who you just met an hour ago. That might not work. So there are those who would say that the evaluation would be done only by those people who have been on the committee for at least six months. You could also accept evaluation responses from someone who has just gone off the committee but served for the previous six months. It's a protocol, it's a rule, it's up to you, some use it and some don't. Other, other reasons. You might seek evaluation feedback from others if the superintendent is, is agreeable to that. We have things that are called 360-degree evaluations where you might ask for feedback from members of the faculty, basically employees of the district or from parents. I don't know of a district that does that in Massachusetts yet, so it's an option and it's something to think about. I'm not encouraging, I'm not discouraging, I'm just saying it's another option. Another question. What process will you use to rate the candidate, the, the superintendent? Well, everyone will be submitting feedback to the aggregators. On each goal, and for all the different criteria that you select to evaluate the superintendent, you will all give the superintendent, the superintendent a rating, and those ratings will come in to the aggregator. And some many, I shouldn't say some, many districts say that comments that are extreme, either in the negative or the positive, will only be considered if those comments are repeated by a second person. In other words, if somebody believes that Satan brought the superintendent to Holyoke, it takes two people to say so before the aggregator would do that. Now, I, I will give you an example of another district. Several years ago in Stoughton, there was an excellent superintendent, but there was a member of the school committee who liked nothing, there was nothing this superintendent could do to win anything other than negative feedback from this member. This member said that the superintendent was so stupid that the superintendent couldn't add a column of sums. add a column of sums. This goes into the evaluation. Well, the search, the search committee, the aggregators' rules, the protocol for the district was, those comments needed to be repeated by another member before they could go into the summary. So there were six exemplary evaluations and one unsatisfactory evaluation. And because it was a lone, you know, singleton, the comments of the maker were not included in any of the aggregate reports. Now, subsequently, when the aggregated evaluation came to the school committee for its approval, our friend, the negative voice, came up with a series of proposed amendments to be critical of the superintendent, and they all failed six to one. But the negative person's voice was heard, and since it's all public, the negative voices may have had an impact. So the system is designed to make sure that there are majority rules, minority rights, but that there's an element of reason that the school committee can control. Now, another, by special rule, in some cases, members would be encouraged to sit with the superintendent before they turned in their evaluation forms, or after they turned in their evaluation forms, depending upon how they felt. And there are occasions where superintendents have said, Member Smith here, I think you were misinformed when you said that I did a terrible job communicating with the community. I have six exemplaries, and I have, you're telling me I can't communicate. Is that fair? So the superintendent gets an opportunity to get their words in, if that's one of the protocols. What you never want to have happen is that a member of the school committee gets called in to the superintendent's office for a personal lecture. That's not a good idea, it's not a good way to do business, it's a bullying tactic, and it doesn't happen often, but it does happen from time to time, so I throw that out. Another rule that you might have, you may, if you wish, by mutual agreement, tie the superintendent's evaluation to a contract extension or a salary increase, but you're not required to do so. That specifically, those two functions, compensation in contracts and evaluation, were separated in the development of the evaluation process. That doesn't rule out that you can't come up with something by mutual agreement. So, you may have other specific bylaws or rules that you want to impose upon yourselves. It's up to you. Now, step number five, the superintendent's goals and the evaluation criteria will be established by the school committee. If you could, I've given you this 17-inch piece of paper here. We talked about the student achievement goal, the district improvement goal, and the personal professional goal for the superintendent. Now, as a second set of criteria, you need to come up with indicators of success for the superintendent. And there are four standards that must be included in the indicators that you choose. As you can see, there are four columns here. Instructional leadership, because the instructional leadership of the district reports to the superintendent. Management and operations, because ultimately, the superintendent is responsible for all management and operation functions. Family and community engagement, which didn't exist before this process was created, so the ability to work with the community and communicate. And standard number five, professional culture. Kind of an example does the superintendent leave? Now, those are standards that were set by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Underneath those standards are separately defined indicators that demonstrate success. So, for example, if you look at standard one, instructional leadership, A, does the superintendent have curriculum indicators to help map curriculum? Or B, does the, does the superintendent do walkthroughs, observations, get aggregated data? Or number three, does the superintendent report to the school committee on assessments, how well you're doing? Are there data presentations made to you? Number four, the evaluation indicator, is there a comprehensive system for getting feedback to you? Goes down a little further. E, informed decision-making, does the superintendent use data in making decisions? And is it done well? And number, and F, student learning indicator means that do, does the superintendent use data and inform you how you're doing in those categories? Now, just on standard one alone, you have six categories, and within the six, you probably have another 15 indicators. That's six, that's 21. So far, we're up to 21 elements to evaluate the superintendent on. You don't want to do that. What you want to do is take one or two from column A, well, column one, one or two from management and operations, one or two from family and community engagement, and one or two for professional culture. And the best way to do this, we've found, is for a couple of members of the school committee to sit with the superintendent and say, you've set your goals and we've set our goals. Which indicators do you think are the most important ones for us to look for? And instead of picking all 65, you might pick a dozen. You might pick eight, you might pick 10, you might pick 12. One district that I'm aware of picked all 65. Superintendent provided this much documentation, nobody read it, and they never did it again that way. But, you know, a reasonable number is, will, will be very effective. So what we suggest you do is look at the standards, look at the culture, excuse me, look at the standards and look at the indicators, and sit down with the aggregation committee and figure out which eight, 10, or 12 you might want to use to evaluate the superintendent. So I'm making this up, but let's say that you, you took something that dealt with data compilation and using data to evaluate the students. Maybe there's a couple of them there. Management and operations, let's say that you're looking at scheduling and maybe fiscal indicators, there's two there. For family and community engagement, you've got communication, you have addressing family concerns, you have all kinds of engagement with the community options that you can select. And number four on professional culture, this is the kind of example that the superintendent sets. Now, this is something that's very interesting that I'm going to point out to you. This came from the Department of Education. You also can, can come up with your own indicators if you like, things that may be Holyoke-specific, lead the district out of receivership into a successful transition, things that might be related to the soon-to-be former receivership. It could be almost anything. But there are two words missing from this list of indicators. Anybody guess what, the important two words that are missing?
Wouldn't it be student improvement?
How about school committee? You see, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education during this period didn't have much use or feedback from the community or the community's representatives. So some of our school committees have added relationship with the school committee as a measurable criteria. Now, a very important question, how do you measure this stuff? What criteria do you use to, to measure the success or fulfillment of the goals that you have established? In the, in the guidebook here, which is a reference book for you, there are examples of what success and proficiency look like, so that you can see them. We suggest very strongly that the school committee and superintendent agree together how the superintendent will demonstrate success. How do you demonstrate success? Well, did you or did you not see that all the principals were evaluated? And if you did, you're not, you're not entitled to see those evaluations, by the way, they're confidential personnel documents. But you can see that they were done, and assure that they were done. Did the principals evaluate the teachers? Did you gather the data that you said you would gather? Did you make as many personal appearances in the community as you said you would? Tell us, give us a, a, a one-page report on how you demonstrated your vision for the district and how you demonstrated your values for the district. It's up to both of you as, as two parties to figure out the evidence that you want to use when you are evaluating the superintendent. Now, there was, I think, on this, this cycle here, I don't think, it was a, one of the, one of the things that we do suggest that you might want to look at are school improvement plans. Did the, were, were all the school improvement plans turned in? Were they presented to the school committee? Did the school committee engage the superintendent in a discussion about the, the school improvement plans? Those are evidence, or otherwise known as indicators of success. So now that you've got all that stuff set out, and it's all formally approved, and the evidence that you will use has been agreed to, your evaluation period begins. Many superintendents will do like a daily check-in, say, on a log, here's what I did this today or this week to move along my evaluation, so that they can give you a report at the end of the period. But usually, about six months into the process, the process recommends that you have a mid-year temperature taking. How are we doing? And this is where some superintendents are told, we're doing real well, we can see that from the evidence, this is great, keep doing what you're doing, we think we're in great shape. Sometimes for a brand-new superintendent, you might hear a lot of constructive criticism, we're not moving as fast here, as fast there. We think that part of your personal professional development plan might be to retweak your personal growth goal into something that will focus more on data or focus more, wherever you think it might be. But, and, and some of the mid-year evaluations are not pleasant, and it's indicated that we just don't think you can do the job, and we're probably not going to renew your contract. Yes?
So all of these discussions are happening in a public forum?
Correct.
Just wanted to verify that. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Madam Chair?
Then let me, let me just clarify. As, as we're going through this process, and I'm looking at even the steps here, if we're saying that the Leadership Accountability and Measurement discusses it first, then obviously then it comes back to the full committee for acceptance and approval. But I think the discussion would first start there, and then obviously we put in our two cents after the fact, which then goes back to the, the issue of the length of time for the process.
Say that again.
It even, like, right now, we're, we're working with time here.
Yep.
And as we're waiting for these meetings to occur and to really start implementing this process, in this one, we have the community advisory team that's going to be about, part of it. How do we create these timelines that should have been already created? Ms. Wilson?
We don't have a superintendent right now, so we wouldn't be creating a timeline. We have a receiver, and I know we're supposed to be evaluating the receiver based on that, so I'm not sure, you know, this, what we're reviewing now is for a superintendent, which I, I think would be, could be a potential different evaluation tool, because I know the state doesn't even use these indicators for receivers. They have a different process based upon what you're charged to do, based around the turnaround plan, based upon, so, so, so we wouldn't be using this process for the receiver.
I think that, I think that when you regain the full authority of the school committee, and when you have a superintendent selected, I believe the state will probably work with you to guide you through the process and give you as much time as you might need to get started on putting an evaluation in place. And you'll be relying on your Evaluation and Assessment Subcommittee to get a lot of this work done. Now, if you are an efficient group of people who can do this, and people do not feel the need to parse the sentences on every evaluation criteria, if people are interested in getting it done expeditiously, you can do it quickly. Use your mid-year or mid-period evaluation to see what changes you might need. Sometimes in the mid-period, they will say to a new superintendent, we gave you 12 criteria to be measured, we're thinking maybe that was too many, and maybe we need to cut them back. Or conversely, maybe we need to add some more to a veteran superintendent. But, but you, you don't want to have to spend unnecessary periods of time group editing or arguing over the minutia, the, the small stuff, when your, your committee may advise you quite effectively. Now, when the cycle is over, you have questions? Can you?
Possibly clarity, I don't know if it's, for a minute, but, question, so, the, the school committee really, in reality, did not have a lot of weight on the receivership. It mostly was from the state, right?
Yes.
Am I correct? Yes or no? So how much of our, our evaluation really is, I don't know, has any, any weight compared to what the state may say, you know, because they were the ones who were directing the, the receiver?
When, when you are working with a superintendent and not a receiver?
Right.
It will all change, the dynamic will change, and the weight will be with the school committee. Now, there may be a, there have been, there have been receiverships across the country where the receiver becomes the superintendent, because that's what the school board wants, not because they've been, not because they've been told, you don't get out of receivership unless you do this. They did it because it was with They did it because it was what they wanted. In that case, you would probably just start a new evaluation for the superintendent as opposed to the receiver. Start it at the beginning of the period. Set goals from there and go from there. Your goals may already be in place if you elect to keep some of the same goals from the period of receivership.
So what we're doing here is going to create an evaluation format. Am I clear about that? Okay, thank you, that's it, thank you.
Now, yes?
So real quickly, I just need to, has the new members received the capacity building plan? So I think we need to have an understanding of what this means. This, when this was created, it was for the school committee to, to build the capacity needed to take over the district once it's exiting out of receivership. In here, and it says, like, we have to start, and I just want to kind of give an example, I just don't want to just talk and that's it. So we have action steps that we're supposed to be going through in kind of a fluid manner. So like in October should have been the goal development, and it wasn't. The expectation is that we are going to evaluate the receiver right now, but then we already have to come out with the plan of what evaluation process we're going to use for the 2025, 2026. None of us want to be sitting here on July 1st now pulling out our hairs trying to figure out, okay, we need this right now, we need this right now. That's why we're doing this all in a process, because although, let's say it doesn't bear weight, what we feel our evaluation is of him, you already need to know what you've got to do when you bring in a new superintendent or if you keep the receiver, the receiver who would then be considered the superintendent. So I suggest, I don't know, I've asked, like, if everybody can bring this with them to every school committee meeting, Ms. Feliciano, if we can make sure that we have even extra copies here. When, we are not your typical school committee. We, like, those that are not in receivership, we are expected to have to do a whole lot more, because there's a lot of learning to do so that we know what it is to be in local control. But we also have to be mindful that we have to go with the process, and we have to follow the process. We're trying to stay positive that we're going to get out of receivership, but again, always remember the word provisional. I try to stay positive, but I'm, when I see it happen is when I believe it. And I think that's the mentality that I'm going to keep, because sometimes things sound too good to be true. Mr. Wallahan?
Thank you, yeah, I'm staying positive too. Yeah, I mean, I, this is all familiar to me. When we did the evaluation on the former superintendent, Dr. Paez, I remember we completed it the fall, and then by the spring, he was basically dismissed by the state. So I mean, this, the formula here, it looked very, very similar. We all participated, we all gave a good due diligence in terms of, you know, making the goals and having our tosay in the process. So I think we did a good job at that time. So hopefully we can just pick up where we left off, thank you.
Mr. Collmar, and then Ms. Wilson, and then so that Mr. Kuchar can continue.
Just a reminder to the new school board members that behind you, you have your own cabinet there. So you said bring a lot of this stuff home and bring it back every week. Well, it's very important that we make sure that they're kept here if you want to take them home, but get them back here and in your cabinet so that you have them every single week. Make sure maybe before you leave, someone will show you where your cabinet is.
I've never used one. Just saying, Ms. Wilson.
So I think there's two things going on right now, I just want to clarify. When we're doing a training on how do we evaluate the superintendent once we have a superintendent, and then the other is our capacity building document speaks to evaluating our receiver. And those are two separate and independent things. Because, just so you know, so one thing, we are creating, you know, our capacity building document talks about creating an evaluation timetable and who's going to, you know, participate, you know, with the goals and evidence and create the schedule of review. Whereas it's similar, but it's not exactly the same. So we are getting trained, and we could use the superintendent document if we so choose as a school committee to review the receiver, but we have not established that yet.
Right, so that's with the community advisory team, and this is like, and when we're talking about with the process, this year, like, these are some, the indicators, you would kind of be using that too, and because once he provides his goals at our next meeting, then we have to figure out what are the indicators that we're going to be looking for and working, and technically it's the local, the leadership accountability measurement. What are we going to use? What indicators and what things are we going, what data collection are we going to use to get that information? So that then we can write our review that's going to go to the acting commissioner. So you're still going to be using some of this stuff, but I just want to make sure that everyone's, you know, it's like, there's some of it that has to be done already.
But I, if I could, I just want to make sure that we're not creating two separate and distinct documents that Mr. Soto has to collect data for, because he has to collect data for, you know, for one, with the state. I just don't want to overburden him with this data collection process, seeing that if we're not in agreement with what the state's using, I just don't want him to have to, you know, triple the work.
Well, that's, that's what the state is telling him to do. It's on here, what he needs to do so, and then how we're going to do it. So that's for him to ask his boss.
So as you get down to the end of the process, you will be given evaluation sheets and an opportunity to rate the superintendent on, with regard to his personal goals. Did not meet, made some progress, made significant progress, met the goal, exceeded the goal for each of the superintendent's professional district improvement and student improvement goals. On the criteria on the chart, you'll rate the superintendent as unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, excuse me, proficient and exemplary. How you elect to go there is up to you. Sometimes the aggregator creates a point scale and uses the point scale. Sometimes they develop an alternative system. But the process is designed to allow you to have flexibility. So when it comes time to taking everything that comes in, the aggregators will come up a report and recommendation and give it to the school committee. You will then have the ability to make changes to the report and even make changes to the ratings. So we've seen situations where the numbers add up. Let's say you had one, two, three, and four criteria, or you get one for showing up, two if it's needs improvement, three if it's proficient, four if it's exemplary. And let's say that the scores come up to 3.2. But you feel that the superintendent is exemplary overall. You can give him an exemplary, you could give the, or her an exemplary. In other words, the scoring system allows you to use your head, your heart, and your gut in rating the superintendent. All of the feedback that is provided to the assessment committee, the working group that you have, those are all public documents. When the process is over, anybody who wants to read them is entitled to read them. There is, the superintendent and the receiver and the mayor and the school committee are public figures, meaning you do not have the expectation of privacy in the performance of your duties. So if somebody wants to say terrible things about you, they can pretty much go ahead and do it. And that's what makes the work, that's why you get paid so much to do this work. In the case I gave you of Stoughton, when they came to evaluate the superintendent, the school committee voted six to one to give this superintendent an exemplary rating, which the superintendent deserved. But our friend on the negative side was able to have the voice heard, and it's on the record. Interestingly enough, the media in that town chose not to cover his comments. So.
But, you know, that's part of the process, right? So members of the public that have been paying attention can then, at the voting booth, decide whether or not they want that kind of representation.
But, and, you know, sometimes when we have school committees that can't even get through a meeting because of the presence of, you know, somebody who's disruptive or out there, sometimes the solution is let the voters help you deal with that. That's one of many options that you have. That's another workshop for another time, for which the cameras will not be turned on, but that's all right. And you issue your final evaluation for the superintendent. If the superintendent's evaluation is proficient or exemplary, then you don't have to do it every year, you can do it every other year. If you wish to use the rating as grounds for saying, great job, we want you to stay here, we're going to extend your contract, that's up to you. We're going to give you a raise, that's up to you. And I think what you'll find is, once you've done it, got the kinks out, you'll feel more comfortable about how to move forward. And remember, as I said, you do have more flexibility than you might think, provided your flexibility is used carefully and appropriately. And you know, the system was created in 2008, and there were a lot of us around the table who helped create that system. And we all said to ourselves, I wonder what's going to happen in, like, twenty years from now or fifteen years from now. People are going to look back and say, whatever became of that thing we were working on in 2008? It went away and we never heard from it again. Or they might say, it's still in place. And I have to say, it's, if it's done right, it takes time, but it's a fair system. Like everything else in Massachusetts, there's a lot of process, a lot of hoops to jump through, maybe too many, but we're used to it because we're from Massachusetts. Those are the, that's the end of my gratuitous editorial assertions, I'm sorry.
Glenn, so you said we can decide to evaluate the superintendent every year or every two years?
That's, well, it depends. If the superintendent's rating is proficient or exemplary, you can go to a two-year system. If it's needs improvement overall or unsatisfactory, then you have to do it every year.
Thank you.
Or if it's unsatisfactory, you might go to an expedited system to try to expedite the improvement. We don't have many of those. Most of our superintendents are proficient. The state indicated, back then, that they never intended that any more than 10% of anybody would be exemplary. I think we probably have more exemplarys than we thought we would have, and rightly so, and a good number of proficient, a few needs improvement.
Mr. Collmar?
Just a question on longevity or whatever you want to call it. Is it the school committee's decision or is it negotiated whether it should be a one-year or two-year contract?
That'll be the school committee's decision. But you could have a contract with the superintendent that provides that if he is rated or she is rated as exemplary or proficient, then the evaluation would take place every other year. But if there's nothing in the contract, you could do what you wanted. You have the option of going to a two-year system.
All right, are there any further questions for Mr. Kuchar?
We're available for any technical assistance you need going down the road.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For every, oh, wait, we have a question, Mr. Wallahan.
I'd like to thank Glenn, he's always been here for the committee, and I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much again. So going back, just the announcement, but it's already finished, there's no class today. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second, motion to adjourn.
And second. Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I know none oppose. So 7:27, we end the meeting. Thank you so much, next meeting is November 25th.